Call this meeting to order. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Councilmember Depenium will be attending this evening. Councilman Graziano.
Here.
Nattori.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Mayor Malham.
Here. Let's try notes.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Bellevle Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellevle Town Hall board and a copy is in file in municipal clerk's office.
Loyal allegiance.
I just defy the United States of America. To the Republic, for its stance, on nation, under God, and the visible, we believe in justice for all.
Okay, at this point, we, just before we go through executive session, we do have some presentations. We decided to put these presentations before executive session and meeting just as a courtesy to the family so you don't have to wait for us to come into executive session. The first one that we're going to present, we have three Eagle Scouts here. And we're going to honor them with proclamation from municipal council. The first one I'm going to call up is Mr. Owen Cuevas.
Oh, you're gonna have to get another set.
Running out of space at the...
Oh, yeah.
I had the, I had the honor of being there a couple of weeks ago. For those of you who know that myself and our deputy mayor, Mr. Cosarelli, are both former Bellevle Boy Scouts, Pac. 350. And it's always an honor and I love to be there. I have vast memories of funwood derbies and camping and hiking and doing everything that these young men do. And it's not easy to attain this rank. So with that being said, we wanted to formally recognize you with a proclamation from the mayor council. I'm gonna read it. Whereas the foremost responsibility of an Eagle Scout is to live with honor, be trustworthy, loyal, courageous, cheerful, and serve others. And whereas the Scouts program develops leadership, citizenship, and service to community through community involvement by being well-prepared. And whereas the attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout requires dedication, hard work, loyalty to the principles on which scouting was grounded. And whereas Owen Cuevas earned the rank of Eagle Scout by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards bestowed upon a Boy Scout. And whereas less than 5% of all Scouts attain this goal. And whereas this achievement carries with it great honor and commitment to continue to develop leadership skills and serve as a guide and a role model for both community and nation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael Malham, mayor of the township of Bellevle, presents this proclamation to Owen Cuevas upon his attainment of Eagle Scout and with Troop 350 of the Boy Scouts of America and wish him a bright and successful future. Sure, you want to take more of that?
Picture. Picture, picture. Take a picture.
But, you know, let's put the one in the middle. Next, we're gonna call up Mr. Brendan Ramirez. Little similar proclamations, so we're gonna read them all. Sometimes we do them in bulk. Today, we're gonna do them all in all particular. Congratulations again. Whereas Brendan Anthony Ramirez completed his Eagle Scout board review and obtained the rank of Eagle Scout on May 31st, 2019. Brendan will be presented with an Eagle Scout award at the Eagle Court of Honor. And whereas the Eagle Scout is the highest rank of recognition offered in scouting and Brendan is well-deserving this recognition. Whereas to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a Boy Scout must advance through five ranks, earn 21 merit badges, and in addition to other requirements, he must complete a service project that benefits a nonprofit organization within the community. And whereas Brendan Anthony Ramirez, a valued member of Boy Scout Troop 38, is a dedicated young man who has earned the respect and admiration of his fellow Scouts through his active participation in many programs sponsored by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas he has truly exhibited a commitment to the scouting principles of honesty, fairness, and service to the community and has consistently conducted himself in a manner of becoming an Eagle Scout. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of municipal council, the township of Bellevle, recognized Brendan Anthony Ramirez for his diligence, determination, and dedication in pursuing the highest honor awarded by the Boy Scouts of America and congratulate him on obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Next, I'm gonna call up Mr. Giovanni Martinez. These, these ranks were obtained, I think, a few months ago. I think there's a typo on the original proclamation and I was unavailable to obtain the ceremony, I think. So we decided to reprint them. Whereas Giovanni Martinez completed his Eagle Scout board review and obtained the rank of Eagle Scout on May 31st, 2019. Brendan was presented with a coveted Eagle Scout award at the Eagle Court of Honor. And whereas an Eagle Scout is the highest rank of recognition offered in scouting and Giovanni is well-deserving this recognition. Whereas to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, a Boy Scout must advance through five ranks, earn 21 merit badges. In addition to other requirements, he must complete a service project that benefits a nonprofit organization within the community. And whereas Giovanni Martinez, a valued member of the Boy Scout Troop 38, is a dedicated young man who has earned the respect and admiration of his fellow Scouts through his active participation in many programs sponsored by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas he has truly exhibited a commitment to scouting principles of honesty, fairness, and service to the community and has consistently conducted himself in a manner of becoming an Eagle Scout. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of municipal council, the township of Bellevle, hereby recognized Giovanni Martinez for his diligence, determination, and dedication pursuing the highest honor awarded by the Boy Scouts of America and congratulate him on obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. At this point, I do need a resolution to go into executive session for the purpose being discussed county improvement authority infrastructure law regulation by Mr. Ike Connor.
Second.
A motion made at second. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mayor Malham.
Yes. Unfortunately, we do have to clear the room while we go through these conversations. No action will be taken while we're in private. We will reconvene the meeting once the discussion is over. Okay, so we just had a motion come out of executive session. You have all rejoined our meeting, the public portion of the meeting. Next up is the combined conference regular meeting. What this is, is just conversations amongst the council. There is no public participation in this portion of the meeting. So basically, your spectators watching us deliberate and have conversation amongst ourselves. It's a little awkward, I understand that. But if you have a question about something that comes up that we discuss, you're more than willing to discuss that during the public participation portion of the meeting. Don't be offended, but we're having a conversation amongst ourselves with you all here as our audience. The first item up was placed on the agenda by myself. It's a discussion on how the township can cooperate with the Bellevle School District regarding the school district's residency policy. This topic came up last week. I often touch base with Dr. Tomko and we had the opportunity to sit down and have coffee and we were then joined by the manager. And it's great. The cooperation, the communication between the two different entities has been rock solid for the past year or so. And we look forward to continuing that relationship. One topic that came up that Dr. Tomko asked us if we could maybe assist with was this. I don't know much about it, but the school district apparently is re-registering children, which is always a good idea to prove their residency. I'm told the number from last year to this year, I believe, was 218 children or students that did not prove their residency correctly or no longer being here in the district. I'm also told that only about 20 or so of those students passed one of the most recent written tests for the state. So that's actually, you don't want to call that a good thing, but if we're eliminating students that really don't have a right to be here and their score is on the lower end of median for our test scores, they're negatively impacting our test scores. So that's probably a good thing to want to call that. That being said, we do have one of our directors here, Mr. Di Lorenzo, who works in the construction code department. And that was a conversation, Anthony, that I had with Dr. Tomko that if we can maybe assist them in looking at the way our COs work. So Mr. Di Lorenzo, just clarify for me. We issue a CO for new home purchases?
Yes.
And apartment rentals?
Yes.
What is the apartment rentals? Isn't every apartment though? Is it like three, three family above, not occupied?
Yes. Owner occupied.
So if it's owner, just for the, for the audience. It's an owner occupied, one or two family, there's no CO on the apartments. If they sell it, it changes owner.
Yeah.
A three family and up would be?
Yes.
And that's every time, is that a yearly thing or just every time somebody comes in or out?
In and out. Everybody comes in and out.
But it changes. So I guess, Anthony, what Dr. Tomko was saying is if we can give a look at what that application, Mr. Di Lorenzo, looks like, if we edit something like number of school age children in the apartment or in the household and we documented that data, we just changed maybe, and this is just a conversation we had, we haven't really hashed it out. But if we were to change that application a bit to ask number of school age children in the apartment or in the house and then somehow that data, if need be, the school district had an address that they wanted to then check, we can make sure that information is in sync. The issue that they have, and the other question for Mr. Di Lorenzo, I guess, is the fact that I've heard rumblings to this effect. Do we have a per person, per bedroom ordinance?
Yeah, it's per square foot, per bedroom. That's how we determine how many are around.
So a two-bedroom?
It's, I think it's a 70 square feet. The guy's probably measuring it and come back and say...
But does that tell you how many people can occupy that bedroom?
Yes. Yeah, that would tell you how many can occupy that whole.
One specific story Dr. Tomko told me about was 10 students in one apartment.
Probably not.
No, they go out and inspect. But that's my point is they have somebody that goes out and inspects.
It's not legal for us.
Oh, it's not allowed, right. But we just need a mechanism, I'm sorry. We just need a mechanism for them to then formally or officially communicate that to your department and then you guys go out.
Right, and they can send it to us too if they think there's something ongoing on there. If they go out and do an inspection on their own, they can send it to us.
They do. They actually do go out.
But they can send it to my office, you know, back and forth. They can send information to me.
So, Anne, can we, can you maybe talk to Mr. Di Lorenzo and see if we can just...
More frank enough, oh, send over to Tomko a copy and see how we can...
That might be just a simple change that they then need to verify something. You guys can look it up, pull it up, and then know what you've done. And our, the Stuke, township attorney is gonna check on the legality of that. It's a place to start. That's it. Anthony, anything else to add from our conversation?
From that, I think that's, that was the problem.
We're also gonna bring Dr. Tomko into a meeting about the future construction for the field and that track that's already been approved.
And the Green Day proposal.
That's what I said. Which I think we're taking action on something for that time. You, Mr. Di Lorenzo, nothing else to add to that sort of conversation?
No.
All right, so Anne, you can talk to him more about that.
I have that.
All right. Next up, we have Councilmember Graziano. Graffiti on buildings and maintenance of trees, weeds along Main Street. I guess it's cool we have Mr. Di Lorenzo here.
Yeah, I just wanted, I know this came up in discussion not too long ago, a few months ago. And we talked about the two buildings. One by State Fair where that beautiful sign is. Behind it, the building where you're on 21 going through it, it's bad. And with all the cleaning that we're doing down that area, all graffiti is facing 21 and you get to see it. So I know, I believe it was being looked into. I just didn't know status. I was looking for status. Along with Main Street, continue with that. And I know, Mary, you did a lot of work. You were trying to work with the county or the state trying to get it cleaned up, all the trees. It's just, I mean, Rucker Street is coming really nice. I drive from Newark and I get off at 21 at Bellevle. And as soon as you hit there, it just, it just goes down. So I mean, all the work that's being done on Rucker Street, that corner lot, coming down Main Street.
I have an update on that from American Board, but...
Okay, great. No, so I just...
We've been fighting with the state on that. And that's one of the topics that we keep dealing with them about.
I was just looking because I know it came up, just asking. Second one, discussion on reservoir. I keep getting phone calls from a lot of homeowners that live around the reservoir. And again, a lot of the trees, whatever they cut down in there, it's a mess looking, you know, when your homeowner, the homeowner looks in their backyard, it's a mess. They're not cleaning. And a lot of other stuff is hanging in their yard, even though they can cut it.
Yeah. We will, Mr. Ike Connor and I, along with Congressman Series, actually walked the reservoir a couple of weeks ago. And we looked at the pumping station where they pump the water out.
Right, with the red light.
Right. And that was, and I know we did reach out to Newark. Frank, Mr. Di Lorenzo, do you have a, do you normally contact Newark when we need them to cut that or somebody in this building does?
Maybe the health department does. I'll check with them.
Anne, can we get on Newark to not just make the outside look presentable, but actually get in there and even the congressman should make a comment of all the downed trees and how the fire hazard and everything else?
And again, just when the residents contact me, that's on their behalf. Again, Rutgers, this came up in a conversation with two residents. And I get it. When you come off of Route 21, I don't believe that's out, this is our call. So when we come off of Route 21, I believe if you wanted to go, you know, make a left, you have to go to Academy. You have that island. It gets all blocked up. It's hard to make that left and it gets boxed up coming back down. And they were inquiring about, what can we do to make a left, take a signal turn there?
So we, we, we've, we're hopefully gonna be addressing that along with a, I don't know, the planning board or zoning board application that's already been approved, coming for final approval plan. They're coming for final plan. They're coming for final approval for the school one site. They're gonna be responsible for improvements in that intersection. So for instance, if you're on Main Street heading south, you also can't make a left of the bridge. You have to go around. So we've been in, somebody's been in conversation.
And Christian Harrison's been in contact with DOT. They're gonna give money towards that.
Yeah. We're gonna, the developer is being asked to look into acquiring that lot on the corner that's been empty for so long, making a dedicated right turn so we can then make a left turn. There's, there's something in play there.
So I can, it's being looked at?
Yep, absolutely.
Thanks, Ray. Sorry, I have a lot to do.
Also with the state that was, I mean, with seven, that was part of...
The state's been, been saying it's not their jurisdiction, although recently this week they just agreed to...
Okay, so, to continue, keep it moving. Rockrod, Jod Lot, Round Bell, and it's...
I've never seen a job.
We'll give you the walk.
I'll raise it. Park carts in driveways. I don't know where this lies, right? So I'm seeing a lot of it to where there's, it could be, not abandoned car, car's not functioning or cars are functioning. But the second car is in the driveway, in the sidewalk. And it's all day, all night. I just don't know where to go. Oh, it's, it's cheap.
It's blocking the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
It's violation we handle that.
Okay, so I just, I didn't know because you're seeing it more and more and it's just, you know, God forbid, you walk around, you walk in the street, you get hit. So I didn't know where to go.
Do you walk on the sidewalk or in the street?
Me? Depending where I'm at.
Good job.
No, because if you're on the sidewalk, you have that.
You have that, and my point is...
Yeah, it's going around because you gotta go to the street.
And it's just not about Tommy. It's about, you know, anybody who's walking there.
Anybody who's walking or...
Right, sidewalk.
What department? Why wouldn't you see for that? Is that his apartment?
Please. Well, that would be the instruction.
That's fine. That's police.
Police department.
Not for the sidewalk.
Okay, somebody has to handle it. And last but not least, to give you a little experience. For those who don't know, I work in Newark, but I had to go to Newark one day because of the MTV awards or whatever down at PNC. So I came up through Bump Pike, made a right, went down Harrison. And I have to tell you, driving down through Carney, through Harrison, was, was nice to see, right? Clean nights, not that we're not. On the way home, after I come down Broadway, because I wanted to do comparison. And it has to do with my next piece with his, the signs, with the ordinance. You're coming, you're coming down Newark and into Bellevle and we have a lot of, a lot of blinking lights around the windows. And when I came from Broadway into Bellevle and down Washington Avenue, we want to beautify, we're looking to beautify Washington Avenue, right? We're starting now, beautification, cleaning, we're doing a great job. All of these things, I think we should get ahead of it. And I don't know, because there is an ordinance for that. And I don't know what we need to do to enforce that ordinance.
I've complained a lot about them and Frankie will send the inspectors out. They, a lot of times, those neon lights, they actually have a setting. It's not like a big inconvenience to the owners. They can just hit a button and it'll go solid or go non-linking. We do have, well, obviously, you know, we have it front of us. We do have an ordinance that prohibits that.
So I was just saying, because I saw, you know, again, I maybe saw one or two going through two, three different towns.
What time is David?
Oh, he's at night.
And that's part of the problem. His men or women work till four o'clock. They don't get a chance to actually spot it so they can't be necessarily proactive unless somebody complains about it.
You gotta say so.
Right. So again, it goes, it goes back to everything else, you know, like clean, like, you know, your houses, the maintenance around those. You know, and I said this going back a while ago. You see something, you say something, right? Because again, as a councilperson, as a one of seven, we do a lot. And I try to do as much as I can, but it's like complaining, complaining, complaining. But I know, maybe we could do something to where, I don't know, shifts or something. I mean, this has to be addressed if you want to beautify Bellevle. I don't know how we do it, but we have to address it.
Right now, it's been really manual. The manager will tell you often. Deputy Mayor will also tell you. If I'm on Washington Avenue on a Saturday, Sunday morning, get coffee and I see overflowing garbage again, I take a picture and send it. I mean, it's just unfortunately, it comes down to anybody who sees it, notifying it and so we can come up with a policy and maybe get inspectors off hours or... I think we should, I know once in a balloon moon, your department goes out and does illegal apartment inspections at night because that's when people are home and bring the doorbell. But I think once in a while, we should have at least a part-time inspector working that hour so that they can do something like that.
And I'm just talking about getting ahead of it, like I said, because we need to with the beautification of Washington Avenue. We're talking about, you know, the new streets, the new curving, the new sidewalks, the meters. Let's look at all of this.
Weekend.
Let's look at all of this.
Tonight, it's a war zone.
Mr. Manager, part of your tasks would be to find a way to get a part-timer maybe at night. Not, not permanent, just...
Multiple code violations down, not just code enforcement. Sidewalk stuff, all that.
And last but not least, garbage concerns coming up again?
Garbage concerns have been a problem.
And I'll just tell you some other things.
Maybe the manager can give us, I know he's been looking into...
Yeah, so I, Anthony?
Oh, this is...
Oh, sorry. Just to let you know, I can't share other pictures and things about being picked up. It shouldn't be, then it's a mess on the street. It's not, it's not...
They pick up recycling with garbage a lot.
But my point is the bags are breaking, things happen. They shouldn't be picked up in regular garbage. Right. And then, then the street's a mess and then it's bad for, it's bad for our town. It's bad for the homeowners.
So, and Steve certainly would, would agree with this. The most important thing that we can do at this point is to document every incident.
So I can photo everything?
So the communication has to be crystal clear because these solid waste contracts are extremely, extremely difficult to get out of. And the documentation has to be, you know, that's our only tool. So we have to be able to document time, date, place. The more detail that we can provide, the stronger case that we have to make our argument. Because the solid waste industry is, they're an industry all by themselves. They have a code of honor, so to speak. Some bid against each other, some don't bid against each other.
So then like anything else, it's got to be the conduit.
Communication.
It's got to be the conduit. Have the, have the homeowners and whoever asks and has that information, photo it, call you and photo it right through your office.
So, yeah. So, and again, just as an ongoing, for better words, ongoing argument that we're making to the solid waste company and to their, what we consider their failures is that we've started dialogue with them.
We've had, I've been in three meetings.
And we've provided, we've provided detailed examples. So the examples that you're referring to, they need to be forwarded to my office.
You got it. Thank you. And I think that's it.
And, yeah, no. Thank you, Councilman Graziano, for participation in our work session. We're gonna move along. A couple of minutes?
A, combined regular meeting of June 11th. You want to do them all together?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to do them all together. So I'm gonna take no part in the debate.
Okay, I have a motion to a couple of minutes for all four sets of meetings. We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes, it stayed on date.
Do we vote as Mayor Malham?
Yes. Report to the manager.
Just speak up, Anne. Yes, sir. My, my manager's report tonight is certainly somewhat brief because quite frankly, since the last meeting, there have been two more or less major issues that we've been working on. We've been working hand in hand with our finance team, our department heads, our auditor, and most important, Department of Community Affairs, trying to get our budget finalized. There's been constant communication over the last month between, the communication between the Department of Community Affairs and Bellevle. So we're doing an amendment tonight, but on Tuesday, the 24th, we will be adopting the budget. And obviously, during the public hearing, we'll be able to go into more detail and certainly explain the budget in great detail. We also have been working on the water issue. There's, I know it's part of the mayor's report. So everybody has at least read or heard on the news of the ongoing water issue in Newark. So I know I'm gonna leave that portion to the mayor's report because I know he's gonna go into great detail. But at the same time, it has been very, very time-consuming. We have been down to Trenton, we have been down to Newark. And we have been, I can't even tell you the amount of conference calls that we spend on each week. And we have another one scheduled tomorrow. So I'll leave some of that detail, some logistics. This past Sunday, we had our shredder day from what I'm told by the Public Works Department, which was one of the most successful shredder days as far as the participation that we had with our community. So I'm glad and happy to do that. Tomorrow's our 9/11 memorial service. So I know Councilman Cosarelli is taking the lead on that. And that's tomorrow morning at 11:00 a.m. Keeping our fingers crossed for good weather on Thursday. Right now, it's a little touch and go, so we're monitoring the weather very closely. But Thursday is just a party and Councilwoman Burke has been taking the lead on that. So we're hoping and keeping our fingers crossed for good weather. I would be remiss if I didn't, and my manager's report tonight, we're saying in July, I had the privilege of acknowledging Councilman Revel and Councilman Cosarelli's birthday. Well, this past Friday, Councilwoman Burke is celebrating another happy and healthy... Happy birthday.
Next up, we have the report of the mayor. As the manager mentioned, most of my life, for the past month or so, I've been consumed with, with Newark water. We have both been on multiple and countless calls, meetings, conferences, in-person meetings, press conferences, closed-door meetings, you name it, we've been there. The end result is the fact that we, getting ready, I think next week, we're gonna maybe schedule a press conference and make some major announcements, but the click note version you're gonna get tonight. We have asked Clare Moss to provide some lead screenings for us, just strictly out of an abundance of caution, absolutely no state or federal mandates requiring that. What happened was University Hospital stepped up for Newark and said, we're gonna screen, which means a blood screen. I'll get to that. Their residents, so I called up Mary Ellen, the CEO of Clare Moss, who's always there for us, always there for Belleville, and asked them, would they provide this for our residents? We're gonna try and stage it. We're asking, while anybody in Belleville, any Belleville resident is qualified, we're just asking that initially, we maybe take care of the elderly, the infirm, children under the age of six, nursing pregnant women. If they want to be tested, they can, but nobody in Belleville will be refused in Clare Moss. It's at the professional building, five Clare Moss, I'm sorry, five Franklin Avenue, from 7:30 to 3:30, Monday through Friday, no appointment necessary, and from Saturday, from 7:30 to 12:00, no appointment necessary, walk-in, get screened. Now, they started this yesterday, and today, the mayor and council's office received a call from Clare Moss and from residents, saying that, Clare Moss was saying that our residents were showing up there with water to be tested. And just to be clear, this is a blood screening for people, that Clare Moss is not testing water, they're providing lead screening, so I just wanted to put that out there. We had, you've seen on the news about Newark's infrastructure replacement program, $120 million from the county. Belleville is available to participate in that, right? It's a loan, it's a loan from the county, Belleville has the option to participate in that. Councilor and I just discussed this in executive session. We have absolutely no determination on what we're gonna do, we're just starting to talk some ideas around, but if Belleville decides, we can go to the county, get a very, very low-cost loan. County has AAA rated, bond rating, so they get a great deal on money, and that's something that this council's gonna have to decide on, really what we want to do. We did meet with, in Newark City Hall, with Mayor Baracka last week. He's still fighting for a lot more stuff, whether it's water, whether it's filters. We join him in that fight. I've been fairly adamant, saying that anything Newark gets, we have to get. I'm not happy, and our federal delegation knows this, and our state delegation knows this, and the EPA administrator in Washington, D.C. knows this now, that anytime Newark is mentioned, Belleville, if you mention that, same conversation. So I've been fighting that fight for a while, and finally, we're starting to get some calls. We did have an opportunity this week for pretentious filters, we're still deciding on the best way to haul that out. It's been slow coming. I will say this, on another conference call we have with New Jersey EPA, the Commissioner or Safe McCabe outright told us, there will be no help for Belleville, there will be no filters, there will be nothing coming, you're on your own. And that, I wasn't happy, if you were on the call, you'd have known that, and I let her know that we're not happy about that. So we're still fighting that fight. We did do some of our own testing, just so you know, we have tested the interconnection. The interconnection is where the water comes to us from the Paquana, basically, before it gets to Newark. So, and let me just say this, I answer, and I put a lot out there on social media, I try and give an update every couple of days of what's been going on, and then I get specific questions on social media, and I try to answer most people. Understand one thing, when you see me answer a question, it's traditionally specific to that person, or that neighborhood of Belleville, or that specific house, or that period of construction. People are trying to take my answers that I give, maybe to chief, who lives in Wutana Estates, house built after 1950, no lead service line, and extrapolate my answer to other questions, and trying to make it seem like I'm giving out disinformation, I'm not really aware of the situation. Let me be very clear, I spend four to six hours a day on this topic. I am very knowledgeable on this topic. It's a very simple challenge to understand, but when you peel back all the layers of it, it gets really complicated, especially when you factor in different neighborhoods, different age of houses, different infrastructures, different water service providers, all of that Belleville has, by the way. So we've done our own testing, testing is at the interconnection, where we actually receive the water, and I wish our engineer was here, but that came back as non-detect. Nothing, no lead in it at all, non-detect there. So we know that the water at the origin is fine, there's nothing wrong coming, the water coming out of the Paquana. Our water is not polluted, our water is not contaminated, our water does not necessarily have lead in it. The issue that we're having is that as water sits in a residential service line overnight, the treatment of that water has been failing, and that water should be coating the pipe, the lead pipe, if you had one. That treatment has been failing, therefore overnight, lead can have the ability to leach into it. If you simply run your cold water for two, three minutes in the morning, you're fine. I argue, if you don't specifically do that, but yet you brush your teeth, or flush your toilet once or twice, or take a shower, you just flush that line out. Again, only if you have a lead service line. To Wutana Estates, all the houses built after 1950, nowhere is there. So every answer is kind of specific to the individual homeowner or the property itself. So we've done that testing, there's no detects there. You've seen, or you've heard stories about the Newark filters that were being handed out to Newark residents, and then afterwards to Civil Lake residents, you may have seen a story that those filters had been failing. That's not necessarily true. They tested three filters out of 38,000, two of them were found to be installed incorrectly, which is a problem with these type of filters, and one of them did fail. Bluefield then went out and tested some of their supply of filters, and it came back 100% fine. Belleville has done our own testing for some of the filters that were handed out in the Civil Lake region by Newark, and those tests came back non-detect. So the filters are working, if you have a filter, they've seen these pure filters, they do seem to be working. That said, lastly, on the topic, we believe this is gonna be a six-to-nine-month issue. We believe that we've already seen some success, where Newark has changed the treatment of that water, and we've been seeing some success in that. The problem is this, it's gonna take six to nine months to work its way through the infrastructure. The problem is exacerbated by the handing out of bottled water, because then people are using less water. It's gonna take longer to get through the system. So they're kind of shooting themselves in the foot by doing that. If we are continuing to flush our lines, we're doing systematic flushing. We team up with Bluefield and Nutley and Belleville at the same time, and we're trying to flush all at the same time to run the water out. And we are seeing signs, we believe, six to nine months, the treatment will be fine, and anybody has a lead service line, that coating will take effect. That's really the water update. Quick update, Main Street, Rucker Street, very disappointing for state. The manager's been on the CC side of a nasty email I sent to DOT Commissioner, because this is what happened. We've always maintained that intersection, which is horrible, is state. County believes that intersection is state. We tried to get the state to deal with it, the state said, we don't want anything to do with it, we don't even believe it's ours. That was a year ago. This has been an ongoing battle of mine for 14 months now, almost weekly, every, the weekly emails. Finally, this county announces they're gonna pave Rucker Street. Great, we're finally getting Rucker Street paved. I have a check-in meeting with the county executive, I say, great, our residents, thank you for doing the intersection. He says, here's the problem, Mike, our jurisdiction stops at the intersection, we're paving the streets, stopping at the intersection, so you can't do that. This infrastructure is dangerous, our police chief, I said it's a matter of public safety, we've had people nearly killed trying to change tires, that you gotta do something for us. He picked up the phone, called his engineer, and said, I don't care what the state says, we're gonna pave the intersection. Great, that was great, everybody announced it, it was wonderful, they were even here for a press conference, everything was great. The state gets wind of it, state says, oh no, it's now our responsibility, we're gonna handle it. The county changes their construction plans, to stop at the intersection, they finish construction, they leave, the state says, we're not gonna do it again. So that's where we currently are, except for the fact that I sent a very nasty email last week, and it seems to be that that was well-received, and now they're talking about coming back to table, they have to sign a jurisdiction agreement, and it does seem like now the state is gonna do it. We don't know when, but it does seem like they're gonna do it. That's the update for Main Street and Rutgers. What else did you have? I know we went along with the lead stuff. You heard, Saturday shredd day was the busiest day ever. I was at the Chinese festival in Edison, you might say, why is the mayor of Belleville the Chinese festival in Edison? The Chinese community always invites Belleville to participate, since we have a very rich and storied history with Chinese-Americans dating back almost 150 years, so much so that we're gonna be planning 150th year anniversary of the first ever Chinese New Year's in Belleville, actually on the Eastern Seaboard that was here in Belleville. So that's why I was there, if you're lucky, why I was there. Upcoming, you heard tomorrow, and I know Councilman Cazarelli will mention it, tomorrow at 11:00 in the morning, 9/11 ceremony, Thursday just a party, you might hear something about that from Councilwoman Burke. And our Veterans Day weekend is already being planned and promoted, and registration is available for the 5K. Last but not least, we, I don't see any representatives of our senior clubs here, but the township has agreed to work with them and purchasing the bingo board for our senior friends in the Tuesday and Friday club. I know they're very happy about that. And last but not, I'm sorry? Last but not least, not happy about, again, I'm not happy about a lot of things, that our recycling garbage schedule went out with an error on it, there is no change to our garbage and recycling schedule, the ones that are online, social media and website aren't correct, and we do have a couple hundred that are being reprinted for those that have physically requested a hard copy of the one that is correct. Okay, that's it for me. Deputy Mayor, do you want to go first, then we'll go back to the council?
Yeah, I have a few committee reports. Yeah, first off, we have, for the Belleville Green Team, we had a meeting last week, we have two sustainable jersey actions that are almost complete, both are gonna be worth five points to our sustainable township goal. The first was the shredd day that the mayor mentioned, over 60 cars participated, being the largest ever, with over 1,000 pounds of paper being recycled. The second thing we're working on is the Better Belleville Civic Association has purchased reusable shopping bags, I don't know if you've seen them, basically the cloth ones, that they're gonna be giving out at just a party, and they're going to be giving them for free, and also, they're gonna be talking about the benefits in using those versus the plastic disposable bags.
If I could just add one thing, there's a reason for that. That gets us, that gets the township points for our green.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, absolutely. So that's it on that, and for 9/11, again, the mayor mentioned it, we have a keynote speaker who is a 9/11 survivor, she's excellent, we've heard her before, and she'll be there so tomorrow, 11:00, corner of Franklin and Chestnut, that's it.
Counselor Robel, we'll just go, Councilmember Graziano, then right back down.
I want to talk about Ida. I think at least, we're trying to move forward in some, you know, equipment for us up here, and as well as, I know we're working on the network and so on.
Yeah, so, so everybody knows, we are continuing to work through the total network from desk, from your desk all the way to the core of the network, all your servers. We're also working on the AV strategy that we're putting here in the courthouse, and along with the other technology which is up here. On the agenda is the i-compass for...
Online agenda.
Online agendas, which is also for the green, so, going green.
The gold papers?
Yes. Gold paper.
That's it, Tom?
That's it.
Councilwoman Burke?
I was approached by the president of the senior club, along with others at the seniors, that it was time to replace the old bingo machine with a new, up-to-date one. I'm happy to announce that through the efforts of manager Iacano, he has agreed to fund this project with no cost to our seniors, and I wish the seniors happy bingo to all. The next thing is, I'm a strong supporter of any event that provides family fun and brings our community together. Last year, we had a food truck festival, and I understand, it did not profit, it lost $5,500. So my question is, let's make sure that this year, a profit is made, Mr. Mayor.
We don't, we're not in the business of turning a profit, Councilor, we provide events. Do you know how much money the Fourth of July costs? Do you know?
No, I don't.
I'm gonna tell you. I thought you would have known, since you apparently did research on this. You know what the fireworks cost? Just the fireworks themselves?
Well, how did we get to the fireworks? I'm talking about a specific thing here.
I'm talking about public events.
It went over my head first, with the other thing, and now I'm going, I guess, over this.
So if your conversation that you want to have, which we could have had at a work session, but you decided to bring it up now, is that every event we run is supposed to turn a profit?
No, no, no.
Not in the business of making a profit.
But why should we have a decrease? Why should we have a decrease? Just the party has a profit too, and we have at least $18,000 every time that we run it.
I beg to differ with that, totally.
Well, you beg to differ.
We are not in the business of turning profit on events, we're in the business of charging people...
Well, losing $5,500, I think, was not a great idea.
How much money does, how much money do we lose for Fourth of July? We just had a...
We did on Fourth of July.
It's an event, it's a public event, you want to pick out one public event, I'm picking one other event.
Your right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Do you know how much the shredding event costs?
No, I don't.
Well, that's a law still, we had to pay for the machine.
Well, I understand that point.
So we don't want to provide entertainment for people without making money? I don't understand that.
Well, I don't know how many people come to this other event, but the price of everything, hot dogs, $15, $20, this and that, I don't know how it's helping that people here. That's all I have to say on the subject, thank you.
I think you're right, you really weren't at the event last year, you would have seen all the people that were there.
I was at the event last year. How do you know I wasn't at the event? Of course I was at the event.
All right, so I just want to be clear, are you saying that we should be making a profit on every event we do?
No, no, you're right.
No, all right, you just want to pick my event up.
No, no, you're right.
You just want to pick my event up.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
On October 5th and 6th, we're going to continue with the town-wide yard sale, this is the third year that we're doing this. Residents can sign up through the finance office, as of today, we have 67 homes that have signed up, which is very good. And as we get closer to the yard sale, the residents that have signed up, all of the addresses will be on our website, so people know exactly who's packing the yard sale or the lot sale. Also, Mr. Iacano, did you get in touch, I know you and Dr. Tom spoke about the theater program, do you have a get back to regarding things, the dates of the high school?
So everything, you see the green light on, everything as far as, not a duplication of show, they're not using, when they're doing their play, we could do ours, we just have to firm up to date. But we have a, more or less, a green path or a straight-ahead path to achieving what we're looking to do.
Okay, and also, when school opens, let you know, we're starting, I believe, the notices as far as...
Application, application, supplies will be going out at the end of September, and the program will start from the beginning of October.
Do we know by any chance what it costs in overtime for just the party?
Now we're back to the end of the party.
Because you really can't, you really can't say that one event, you know, I mean, it's just absurd statements, an absurd, illogical, and uninformed statement to me, and you're doing a disservice to yourself. Should we cancel the, should we cancel the Veterans Day parade?
No, I've never met anyone as arrogant as you, Mr. Mayor.
You're the one that brought it up.
Never, never.
Should we cancel the Veterans Day parade?
I really can't believe that you speak to people like that. I really can't believe...
You're the one that brought it up, I'm just defending you.
But you don't stop.
Can I make a comment?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, so we're done with committee reports, we have a special action to tell, do you want to walk us through how we...
I just read the title, a motion, a second?
Can we make a motion?
Sure.
A resolution to amend the 2019 municipal budget.
Make a motion?
Second, motion maintain, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lober.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes. Communications?
A letter received from Congressman Albio Series, stating that Township Belleville received a grant from the Assistant Superior Fighters' Grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, in the amount of $30,059.09.
Ordinance?
Ordinance number one for introduction, an ordinance to amend or revise the township of Belleville, chapter 8, PS16, entitled Handicap Parking Stasis.
Make a motion, introduce?
Motion maintain, clerk Colerole.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Jim Lober.
Yes.
Mayor Melon.
Yes.
certain acquisitions and adopting reclassification compensation plans.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders number three for introduction and ordinance of the mayor and council of the Township of Belleville, County of Essex, New Jersey, adopting the valid business district redevelopment plan.
I just had. Number one, it's, it's an area of need of rehabilitation. There's some conflict in the writing of this, so I don't know.
It's titled redevelopment, it's supposed to be rehabilitation.
Rehabilitation.
The, the content of the report says rehabilitation.
So just do it. Yeah. And it should be, of course, yeah. Yeah, part of it says redevelopment and the other one, the rest of it says rehabilitation. So.
It is rehabilitation, not redevelopment, not condemnation, not.
Yeah, it's rehabilitation. So do we need to?
It's actually working.
I can change it when she, prior to adopting it, prior to publishing, I can change.
So motion introduced.
Do you ask?
Yeah.
Amend the title, you'll amend the ordinance. You're doing it, it's the first reading, so if it's a second reading, you have a problem. It's the first one.
Okay.
So she can publish it and the right, the correct title.
Should it say rehabilitation plan?
Rehabilitation.
Yes.
It's just the, the, all the resolutions and everything leading up, back and forth, everything else is fine.
Yeah.
I will take care of it.
It's just there and it's the title and the introduction.
So a motion made, second and all that. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders number five for introduction and ordinance to delete chapter eleven, section two dash fifteen transportation thing in its entirety.
Motion introduced.
Second. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders number six for introduction and ordinance to amend chapter two point twenty-five of the revised general ordinances in the Township of Belleville entitled Payment of Medical Benefit Freements for Employees of the Township of Belleville Who Have Retired.
I just had another question.
This corrects.
This corrects.
We're in defeat, defeat number three on second reading. This corrects that.
Motion introduced.
Second. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders number seven for introduction and ordinance to delete chapter seven taxi cabs in its entirety and replace with an updated and revised ordinance.
Motion introduced.
Second. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders for public hearing, second and final reading. Orders number one for public hearing and ordinance to amend by general ordinances in the Township of Belleville, chapter eight dash eight designated loading zones.
Motion open for public hearing?
Second. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders adopted. Orders number two for public hearing and ordinance to amend chapter three point five of the revised general ordinances in the Township of Belleville entitled Noise Control.
Motion open for public?
Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Sir?
Just give us a quick rundown for the record, how the noise ordinance is being modified, some of the highlights of it, so the residents of Belleville know what the new rules are for noise.
Thank you.
I can talk about it. The main, it tightens it up a little bit to be more consistent with state law in terms of the timeframes and the decimals for different timeframes. That's the main change. It also is more consistent in terms of having a noise control officer through the police department and the testing that's necessary. That's basically. The other ordinance was missing some timeframes in terms of when certain levels of noise can be projected, so we changed all that. Our, the reason why I changed it, I drafted a completely new ordinance, although a lot of it is the same, it's mainly those, and I'll tell you where the sections that you, the main sections is, table one is, and table two are the main changes. Okay?
Will this, will this be on coded systems within the next month?
No, it doesn't get on that quickly, but the clerk's office does have it. It doesn't get on the, in fact, that code, the code that's on the website, the one that was on the previous website hadn't been updated in, I think, eighteen years. This one was updated through, I think, June of two thousand seventeen. Is that correct, Kelly? So we're not updated that quickly. It hasn't been budgeted for yet, so we're working on getting that done. But so no, it will not be on the coded system, but will be available through, it's obviously going to be published, but will be available to the clerk's office if anybody has any questions.
Is it possible to have this published to the township website so the residents can specifically what the time periods are, what's the decibel levels?
We can have, we can, I can look into having a separate link to the website, to this particular ordinance or uploading, sure.
Anybody else?
At the.
Just, I need you to stand up, stick your name and address for it.
The hours decreased.
Name, name and address for the right.
I'll guarantee we have an involvement. Did they lower the, the time limit?
The hours are actually the same as the previous one.
Same, okay.
Ma'am?
My name is Lenore Montrequimol. I'm a resident of Belleville Park. And I thought you would like to know that our town has refuge collection ordinances. And just read.
This is just on. This is on specific ordinance.
Say again?
This is on specific ordinance.
About the noise?
The park.
You can talk about that in public. Yeah, this is just a noise ordinance. In public comments, you could.
Give me a little bit and I'll call.
Noise? I can tell you about.
No, 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 no. This is a specific noise ordinance.
I lived at the stone quarries and I had a quarry.
Public participation.
All right. I'll call on you first, I have a Republican's patient.
Motion to close public and open for, yeah, move for final adoption.
We have a motion to close and move for public, move for final adoption. Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend chapter two point twenty-five of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville entitled Payment of Medical Benefit Freements for Employees of the Township of Belleville Who Have Retired.
We're going to open this up for public. We have to open up the public in order to then vote. The town council is going to defeat this. This was, we found an error in it and we corrected that error with the introduction for first reading on ordinance six that was just passed. So even though we have to open it for public, we're going to open it. Hopefully, we're good. We're going to close it and then we're going to vote to defeat this.
Motion, motion open public?
Second. We have a motion made, second. Open public, clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend chapter two point twenty-five of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville entitled Payment of Medical Benefit Freements for Employees of the Township of Belleville Who Have Retired.
We are defeating this, but we have, Mr.
Well, because I want to clear something up. Mr. Fran Antonio mentioned about the pension system. This has nothing to do with the pension system.
I did clear that up, but Mr. Fran Antonio won't talk about it anyway.
And, and I want to clear that up. The problem with the pension.
We're not discussing pensions.
Well, no, I'm just, because he made the statement.
He, you can make a, or a public comment if this is about medical benefits. Anybody else?
Motion to close and pass for final adoption?
Motion to close and defeat on final, I guess.
He's asked defeat.
Do you have anything else to say?
Just say no.
So this, so just, just so, I wasn't going to say anything, but.
The reason, the reason why.
You're going to go with a change. Let me talk about the origin. I don't know where to begin. Forever in this town, every time you negotiate a labor contract, it's set in stone. For those of you who don't know, historically in Belleville, our, this one specifically for police and fire, except for last one negotiated, employees receive lifetime health benefits for life after retirement. This changes that. So you won't.
For free?
For free. They, they receive it for free. This changes that. They don't get it for free. Lifetime benefits anymore. You didn't hear that before. This is a positive thing for the taxpayers, not necessarily a technicality, it's a technicality on years, but the intent of this, which was already reintroduced number six on first reading, is that police and fire, new hires, police and fire, will not receive free lifetime health benefits. Of course, you didn't hear that just now. You would have been totally confused by hearing that statement, but that's the purpose of what we're doing. It's a great, great, fiscally conservative, tax-saving dollar initiative that we're, we're going to take here. No other council has ever negotiated that into a contract like this one did. You didn't hear that just now, but you'll hear that when we go second reading the next week. Anything else to add?
And the reason why it's being changed, so everybody doesn't know there's any bait and switch here, the prior ordinance that was introduced was inconsistent or did not make the contract. This is based on a contract that was negotiated by the prior town manager. The prior town manager negotiated a contract with police and fire that put this provision in there. Well, when I did the new ordinance, I changed the new provision that Mr. Tucci negotiated. What the police and the fire union saw in that ordinance was that there was another inconsistent provision of our ordinance with their contract, that this provision has been in their contract forever and it's inconsistent with our ordinance. So to make our ordinance consistent with the contract that we negotiated, we introduced, a new ordinance was introduced tonight to be consistent with the police and fire contract that was connected.
The end result, it saves the taxpayers a lot of money that we no longer offer free lifetime benefits after retirement. It would be nice if somebody actually.
What?
Would have to.
So will the folks that are already covered be grandfathered? So in other words.
New employees, new employees.
New employees, so. January first, two thousand nineteen, so any employee, any police or fire, this is for police or fire, anybody, and this will be part of the second reading next time, next time we hear it, any police or firefighter hired after January first, two thousand nineteen, will not receive free health benefits upon retirement.
So we already have a motion to close, close and vote.
Vote, vote for final adoption.
Motion made, second. Open public, clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
No.
Graziano.
No.
Nattari.
No.
Robel.
No.
Mr. Malbert.
No.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Orders approved. Orders number three for public hearing and ordinance to amend chapter two point twenty-five of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville entitled Payment of Medical Benefit Freements for Employees of the Township of Belleville Who Have Retired.
So we already have a motion to close, close and vote.
Vote, vote for final adoption.
Motion made, second. Clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
No.
Graziano.
No.
Nattari.
No.
Robel.
No.
Mr. Malbert.
No.
Mayor Mellon.
No.
Orders approved. Orders number four for public hearing and ordinance authorizing the guarantee by the Township of Belleville, New Jersey, for payment of principal and interest on the capital improvement lease, revenue bond, series twenty nineteen of the Essex County Improvement Authority.
Make a motion and open for public?
Second. Motion made, second. Open public, clerk Colerole.
Counsel member Cazarelli.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Mr. Malbert.
Yes.
Mr. Fran Antonio.
Yes, why are we doing this on behalf of the board? Why are we doing this?
Okay. Is that the totality of your conversation, your question?
Well, no, it depends on what you're telling me. I don't, I'm asking you to do it, then I have some questions.
Joe, do you want to, can you handle this one or? You can, I'm sorry. Actually, the town attorney can. It's, it's, this is not us, we have to do this on behalf of the Board of Education.
Okay, so.
They're paying the note.
The Board of Education is paying the note. Under state, under state law, towns can borrow from your improvement authority, just like Newark is doing for the, for the water lines. Board of Educations can borrow, the ECIA has passed their own resolution that allows Board of Educations to borrow, provided that the township guarantees it. that allows Board of Educations to borrow, provided that the township guarantees it. Joe Ficcone's here, he'll tell you that it does not go against the township's debt service.
Correct.
So it has no negative effect on the township whatsoever. The Board of Education cannot get the money if the township doesn't guarantee it. I think it's never happened in the state of New Jersey where the only way the township could be liable for that money is if the Board of Education went bankrupt. That has never happened in the state of New Jersey, ever. So in order to assist the Board of Education, in getting that money to make the improvements that they're going to make, it's necessary for the township to guarantee it because under state law, the Board of Education can't borrow directly from the ECIA.
Okay, well, the Board of Education.
Like Mary said before, too, by going through the ECIA, the interest rate.
It saves the taxpayers money because if they bonded for it, they would pay a much greater interest rate. They're using the ECI's bond rating.
All right, the Board of Education had on their agenda this item, to borrow 4.7 million dollars from the ECIA for some improvement that I and some others believe are unnecessary. The problem I have with the ECIA, a long history going back to them, they were created as an armed, vested county. Number one, to bypass their budget. And it's a way to bypass voter approval bonds. You don't have to get voter approval. They want to borrow 4.7 million. Like with the 49 million dollar bondments, they had to get public approval. This is a way of bypassing them. And when they create the ECIA 20, 30 years ago, I was an objector. The ECIA, ECIA though, has a ton of problems. Their management is very suspect. They lost a $10 million building on Besseck Avenue in West Colby by the airport because they did not show up to a foreclosure hearing. And I went to a freeholder meeting, complained they were going to look into it. I wrote letters, they never got back to me. I asked our computer.
Mr. Mary, can you just speak to this particular?
Well, this is the problem. The problem, I don't want to get involved with the ECIA. The other thing they did, I went to a public hearing when they passed a bond ordinance for Bear Stadium. And I said, why are you getting us involved in Bear Stadium? Mr. Fran Antoni, the taxpayers are not going to pay a dime for Bear Stadium. Rick Simone is going to manage it and pay through the ticket sales. Well, you all know that one bankrupt. And we, the taxpayers, the vested county are paying for it. The, don't get involved with the ECIA. All right? Let the voters, the Board of Education, let them do what they do with the 49 million dollar bond ordinance, which with interest is costing us $74 million that we're paying. Let them finish that bond ordinance. I mean, they, one of the things, they want $100,000 to replace the fence at Clearland Field, but it's a perfectly good fence, you know? And then a million dollars to put turf field, the Clearland Field, at school number seven. A million dollars for each of them. Well, Clearland Field is six, seven times. I question, nobody can answer. Why you got a million for both fields? So please don't get involved with the ECIA. When I spoke to the board, they went to private session, they come back and they tabled it. So at this point, they didn't approve it. So I hope you don't approve, do not get involved with the Essex County Improvement Authority. Please.
Jerry, I'm very sure in grocery. You mentioned that the only way you get involved is in the event the Board of Education goes bankrupt. Didn't they go bankrupt five years ago?
No.
The state didn't bail them out. They don't have a state monitor because.
They do.
They do, but they didn't go bankrupt.
Well, they went under. They were in debt for three and a half million dollars or more.
Debt is not under.
I thought if it's negative, it's like going bankrupt, isn't it?
It's like going bankrupt.
Bankrupt means, bankrupt means they don't have to pay their debts.
You just sent out a letter, together with the council, with our estimated tax bill. The taxes went up because of a bond issue that was passed. Now, this will also cause it to go up even higher if they end up taking whatever amount Mr. Fran Antoni mentioned. That would let it go up even higher because they would have to pay that back too. So isn't that a negative effect technically on our tax bills?
I mean, every time you borrow money, you have to pay it back. You would have to determine whether or not, we only have one turf field in the town, whether or not multiple turf fields are worth something. But again, your, how they spend it, what they do with it if they get it, would be something you take out with the Board of Education. It's a, if we're like a cosigner, that's not, that's not obligated.
But what I'm saying is if you didn't pass this tonight, they can't go further into debt.
True.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
And I, I don't know how accurate it is, but I've been told that they've already budgeted for the payment. And while that's the maximum amount, they have absolutely no intention on taking that full amount. It's like a line of credit. You only pay what you draw from it. And what they're planning on drawing, from what I've heard, is already incorporated into their budget as far as the payments go. Anybody else? Yes.
Michael Sheldon, 47, Floyd Street. I want to thank you for explaining what's involved with this matter. That was the subject of my question. My, the question I was going to ask was to make sure that it was clear to everyone exactly what your involvement would be if the board does go forward with this ECIA matter. Then essentially, you guys are serving as cosigners or are just backing the loan in the extraordinary case that somehow the Board of Education should become insolvent. Because Mr. Martino pointed out, it's never happened before in the history of New Jersey. The next board meeting, by the way, is Monday, September 23rd. The ECI matter is expected to be on that agenda. That will be the appropriate time to go through the details. But just to correct Mr. Fran Antoni, the amount is not 4.7. The maximum amount would be 4.5 million. Just a minor technicality, but it's not. The whole detail of the matter will be discussed at the next board meeting.
Anybody else? On this particular matter, motion closed.
Motion to close, a move for final adoption.
Motion made in second, clerk Caldwell.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Grobel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Orders approved.
Motion to okay the public comment, second.
Good, motion made in second, open up public comment, clerk Caldwell.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Grobel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Garbage ordinance.
That's having great loss.
This garbage ordinance you're talking about.
Which garbage ordinance?
About going, you're going to have somebody go around, hire somebody part-time to go around and check out the garbage that's overflowing.
Talking about Tom, the property maintenance?
Why, why would you want to enforce ordinance or betterment of the place? For the betterment of the town, for the betterment of the community?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Now, if you put that ordinance in place, you vote on it. If you don't enforce it, it's no good.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I guess, I guess we're getting somewhere.
Yes, we are. Elwood Park has an ordinance. One, against can't wait. And I've asked them to revamp it and they. One, your trash needs to be in a, they say, a metal can. Fill four inches to the top with a tight-fitting lid. Two, it cannot be put out until the night before garbage pickup. And it has to be brought in within five hours after trash is picked up. Metal garbage cans are obsolete, very few people use them. Should be some type of reservoir or whatever. One, if you go out in the morning or the day before, my garbage pickup is on Monday and a Thursday. If you go out on Sunday morning, you're going to see people's garbage aisles already out there on the street. So if the code, our town has code enforcement or the police to enforce those, if there's a complaint made. But if nobody complains, the town doesn't enforce it. So why have an ordinance if you and the town are not going to have somebody enforce it?
We, we, we have enforcement, it's wrong with anything. I don't, I don't.
We're missing something.
You're missing, well, you're, you're talking.
Does this relate to Belleville at all in any way or?
Well, you were talking about hiring somebody, right? To go around and enforce what is not happening?
Right.
Okay.
I think, I think, I think the issue was there.
Our, our code issues work specifically during the week.
What we're talking about is putting it into other hours, you know, adding other hours so we can have them in those off hours, like you're saying. Like on a Sunday morning, we don't have people working. So possibly that's, that's something we would do on the off hours. That's what it's all about.
I'd like to comment on the.
Wait, yeah, we're going to get you here, Jay, so just so you know, because you're not, you haven't been in our public meetings. You have about five minutes to speak.
I know, but I'd like to comment on what you said.
We're not having a conversation though, so as soon as she's done, I'll let you speak. Okay, come on.
Okay. So basically, what I'm saying is you need to enforce it. If you don't enforce it, it's not going to happen. Now, as far as our town saying to pick it, you have to bring in your cans, trash cans, five hours after pickup. You never know when the trash collectors are going to come. So five hours isn't justifiable. Usually, there's one or two family people working. And you have to give them at least seven hours for working and getting to and from the house.
God bless.
I just don't see it happening in Elwood Park. It's really offensive. Because people, most people, they load up their garbage cans, bags overflowing, they don't have tight-fitting lids, and then you have animals and debris falling all over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, do you want to go next? Just state your name, Margaret Lapador.
Margaret Lapador, 137 Stevens Street. I am a Belleville resident. I do want to say a couple of things as far as after-hours in this town. This town gets a bad rap. The police are unbelievably great, code enforcement is good. But on the weekends, you've got these people, as we all know, that are throwing trash all over the streets. You've got to see to believe what's going on with heavy, heavy trucks that are going down the streets. And that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight because we as taxpayers are all going to pay for the fact that these heavy trucks are going loaded to the gills on some of these side streets. But what I'm thinking is anyway, for a little while, unfortunately, I was community watch, then I got busy. But I'm saying, you guys do what you have to do, understood. After-hours, if we had more volunteers, and again, that comes out to the community for all of us. Easier said than done. We're blowing up our sleeves a little bit with neighborhood watch, community watch. Because I know in the evenings after four o'clock, I know on the weekends, code enforcement is not around here, you've seen all kinds of things going on. I think it would not hurt if we did more community watch, more community involvement with other communities to help you guys out.
Ooh.
Thank you.
Honestly. Because I do appreciate what this town does try to do, especially the police. They bend over the backwards. And they get a bad rap between the end newer and only down every 20 months.
We do have a community, a big community outreach coming up, close that, Jay.
I know, you know what we're doing.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to, with the neighborhood watch.
Yeah, we put it out on social media.
Yeah, I told her.
We roll up our sleeves, like I said, I'm a light person. After-hours on the weekends, all kinds of stuff is going on because you guys aren't here, of course, because you're here nine to five, understood? But, you know, that's about it.
And please, if you see something, say something. Absolutely. Right to, again, if you see something, say something, contact the manager's office. And that's.
We are open 24 hours, seven days a week. You can always call us.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, sir?
Hi, my name is Ash Sadar, 182 William Street. And I'm bringing to your attention about, I live in the condominium, like.
What was the address, sir, I'm sorry?
182 William Street.
Please.
It's opposite the church. Yeah, the three houses together, I bought the last one. And the neighboring two houses have built a deck at the back. And it's on common land. And one has it for the last 10 years, the other one has it for the last year. And the town, I mean, the code enforcement knows about it because I've already informed them. And after these people came to know that I'm going to be informing the code enforcement, they approached them to get permits. Now, I say they should not get the permits because it's on common land. It belongs to all three of us. And the deck should be taken down.
So I, I'm not going to speak for Mr. Di Lorenzo if he's no longer here. But I'm assuming, the standard would be they go to them and, and, and give them the process for permits, but they would have to show a survey. And at that time is when it'll get found out that it is common land. And I'm assuming they would not be able to proceed or have to even remove.
Right, they may deny the permit.
Right.
Just asking for a permit doesn't mean that they're going to approve it. They just want documentation.
You are communicating with the construction code department?
He is aware of it. Mr. Di Lorenzo, I sent him an email, pictures. And he did send somebody out. But that's been a while now. And the way the conversation went, that they are applying for the permits and if they have all the paperwork, that I could get the permit for it. But my reasoning here is, how could they get the permit? That they can't come to all three of us, it's common space.
Sure. Just the manager has a meeting already confirmed. There's construction pitch tomorrow, he'll lay down to his list.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, ma'am?
Sarah Sadar, 19 Hungo Street. One, about the water issue. Who in Bloomfield paid for those filters? Was it Bloomfield?
I can't answer that question, I'm not quite sure.
Okay, because I understand that you're arguing with all of these different organizations about who should pay for it. And you've already said on social media how there's no money in the budget for any kind of filters.
Well, I've also said that we're under no federal or state mandate to actually do it.
I understand that, but if you had a wife who was pregnant with your child, you wouldn't want her drinking the water. Because I tested our water at 3:00 in the afternoon, where plenty of water had been going through those pipes, and I tested positive for that. I even posted that on social media. Another thing is the, on Garden Avenue, it's like the Indianapolis 500. There's no crosswalks except at Belleville Avenue or at Drummond Street. So if you need to cross anywhere between there, you're just plain progress. And I've seen multiple people almost get hit. You have a park at either end. And the sign that said 25 miles an hour that lit up, that said how fast you were actually going, was taken down after a week. And doesn't seem like it's getting better. And I'm not going to call out who said it, but apparently, a council member has told multiple residents that it is a county road and you'll do nothing about it. And it's not a county road, you're right, it's not.
Belleville.
Belleville.
But Garden Avenue is not, so it is the responsibility of the town to make sure you're not going 55 miles an hour on that. It's not that long of a street. You could have a four-way stop you put at Dawson, which is a midpoint, makes people slow down at the stop. You could put Speed Hump. You could just have a cop there. Make plenty of money to solve the water problem just by handing out tickets there. So you'd be killing two birds with one stone. But it just doesn't make the residents feel very good when you have council members telling residents, well, it's not our problem, it's a county road, when it's not. It's a lie.
Well, they obviously weren't correct in their statement.
And, okay, so we're not going to, you have nothing to say, like, maybe you'll look into it? Anything, like?
We have our police chief sitting right here. You could, you could have always called the police department.
I've called multiple times.
Chief, can you look at the, why, why they've called multiple times and nobody has?
Wow.
They come when, don't get me wrong, the police are amazing. I love our police department, I love our.
That's us that aren't good then.
It's.
I mean, what, what, what is the?
It's just that he, you can't have an officer sit on one side street all day, 24/7.
I wouldn't call Garden Avenue a side street, but.
It's okay.
It's a main thoroughfare, connects to a major thoroughfare. And speeding is a problem throughout the country.
The chief lives on the fastest street in Belleville, or not?
We did the survey and actually, I'm not even lying to you. But yeah, Bryant Street was the fastest street in Belleville. But, okay, this is the first I'm hearing about speeding on Garden Avenue.
Okay.
I have to be honest with you.
Your officers do come whenever we call and say that there is a problem.
So we'll look into it and I'll do a survey and start and then we, we, we'll try and solve your problem.
Thank you.
But I have to be honest, I don't do that. That's the town engineer and the council person.
Okay, so can we just?
Big recommendations. But I will look into Garden Avenue, I promise you. I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to step up slightly.
Okay.
Go the other way. Margaret Lapador, 137 Stevens Street. I have files of what's been out. This is for everybody here, of course, here and there. Only two copies, one from America's and one other copy of everything.
Didn't you, you were talking about the question?
Well, this is one to. What the situation is that I'm closing. This is a picture of 127 Stevens Street, Belleville. This house was occupied for a lot of years with the same family. Fast forward, it sat in foreclosure for a long while. Fast forward, purchasers came in, they're rehabbing the property, which is great. Here's the problem here, if you take a look at this picture tonight, you have a long copy of the light person. The problem for me is unbelievably so that now, what we've got here, there's a wall that's been taken down along the front of that property. A piece of that wall belongs to me. They ripped down the wall luckily, again, thanks to the police on a Saturday. So this is Saturday, that's why I can't wait. Police came, filed a report, we looked at the survey, long story short, that piece of the wall that they were ready to take down is a piece that apparently belonged to my property. Fast forward, I understand, it's my understanding, that Belleville owns that portion of the property. My dilemma now is, and I want this on public record, is because these guys are doing what they want to do like gangbusters, you've got a wall, if you look at those pictures, a wall that's been taken down. They stopped with what they were going to do because code enforcement thankfully stepped in to say, hey, you're going to have to revamp this because that is her property. So now the problem is, if you take a look at these pictures, you've got this wall that's been sitting, that's half knocked down. You've got piles of dirt, you've got debris all over. On the weekend, what they do now is they leave their trucks, commercial trucks with New York plates parked on the street. What they do is they empty huge dumpsters at 6:00 in the morning. The truck that comes in and out absolutely weighs a ton. And then they sneak in and they sneak out. So what's going on here is the fact that they're rehabbing it is great, but the suffering is unbelievable. This is months and months and months. If you look at the picture now, you've got tons of cement pieces sitting there that are sitting there forever. You've got bags of garbage sitting there forever. And it just goes on and on and on. If you take a look at the second portion of that report that I left as far as what happened with the street and what's going on there, I have a sinkhole in front of my house at 137. We had an emergency where the name broke, and that was on a Saturday. Town was grave, they had to get a crew together. This went on for a few hours, it was about 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning. By 7:00, they got a crew together. The point is, they had to dig up everything, do what they have to do. They had to fill that area in. If you look at the pictures now, that area, and it's square off, you see it in my pictures, there's a sinkhole. The rest of the road is also starting to deteriorate with cracks going from a good portion of the road in front of my house to 127 and to one, to the other side. So it's now a dangerous situation if you take a look at that. And as I said again, you see huge trucks that are getting in, getting out. And as I said again, you see huge trucks that are getting in, getting out. The other day, Belville police came when a truck, truck, the trailer actually came and tried to do something. So it's really, really out of hand. And this 127 Stevens Street, they're just having a good old time. Got debris all over. Court enforcement has been great, they have been good, and they have been trying to do what they have to do. But again, we've got the commercial trucks. Police were there the other night, thankfully they came. And commercial truck taking up two spaces because they were gonna do that. And as far as the debris that I hear. So my problem is absolutely, and I want this on the record, is what's gonna happen with this famous wall that they're now revamping or deciding they're going to do? Because I did nothing to do anything to that wall. If you take a look at those pictures, and that's been sitting for months and months. This is all new, so it's not just this week. So my problem is, what's gonna happen? I don't want to go into civil suit. If it's Belville's headache, because supposedly that property belonged to Belville 100 years ago, that's what they said. Now, these guys are doing what they have to do, apparently. So I guess what I'm saying is my hint is to try...
Again, Mr. DiLorenzo is not here, but the town manager has an appointment with him tomorrow. You have a copy of that? We will take it up, and we will follow up directly with you.
As far as the road issue, I know the road issues now, I want you to think, but please, you really need to address that because again, that is becoming a huge sinkhole with cracks all over that wall.
You have the oak too on the street? Okay.
I appreciate it, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Eric, from Los Angeles, we have you. Curious in what happened with the fence up there way Avenue? Why the type that was roughing is turned down?
I don't believe the council is even really aware of because the condominium association got back to us and said that they would be interested in a new fence. And since they were spending the majority of the total cost, we need, we would need their cooperation.
On that, if they're gonna replace the same fence that there is gonna get damaged every year like it does with the snow plowing, with the garbage backing into it. I've been requesting to, a guard be open to put up with this project if possible to stop all this damage that's being done from the snow plows and garbage trucks and all the garbage parking backing into it. Because it doesn't make sense to put the same fence up and year and year to damage it.
I'm familiar with the original fence issue that was damaged by their snow plow. It was our fence, and we had to deal with them, that was the cost of it. I'm not aware of any updates. Yeah, so we have a contract. It's 15,000 on there, and 10,000 off on our end. And certainly, I'll look and see if we can squeeze a guard car early in that. I mean, it seems like it makes sense, so...
Can we just kind of put the same fence up?
You know what? Again, that estimate, I'd have to review it to see what the actual fence is. I know that we received the estimate. For me to tell you the actual fence, I would only be guessing, I'd have to take a look at that.
Right, so it doesn't make sense for them not to take that fence I offered. Three, and it's lots stronger, you see what I'm saying? All right, thank you.
First, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for relaxing the boards and letting the residents speak twice. Thank you, that's a pleasure.
Once in a while.
Also, are we gonna be, this budget amendment? This budget amendment, are we gonna be allowed to speak on it?
You can speak on it if you want, you have five minutes.
Is there gonna be an official public hearing?
Next meeting.
At the next meeting? All right, and I won't take the time with you. And it's a nice night, and I want to thank Mr. Graziano for bringing up the cars on the sidewalk. On my block, we got two specifically, all night long. And one of the main reasons is, we have all these illegal apartments. There's no parking space. So the guy parks his car, and the one guy has a tremendous yard. I think the chief remembers, Miss Feath, the veil?
Yes, sir.
Or she passed away, but turn house. All night long, almost every night, he parked right up against his garage. It came to my attention when a lady walked over, her child has fallen in the street to go around. And they parked all night long. And the other thing, on my street and others, by very soon on my street, because I go out every night about 10, 11 o'clock to close my laundry. On my prospect, they park all the way up to an inch of Belville Avenue, which is supposed to be 50 feet from the stop sign. And that's gotta be enforced too. And again, the reason is these illegal apartments. We've got too many of them, all right. The other thing, okay, I got another thank you, but let me address Rutgers Street. You made a big deal about that, about the state not doing that. The county paved it. Have you looked at Rutgers Street? It's horrendous. Why didn't they, you not make them... You're fighting with the state to pave that intersection, which is correct. Why didn't you make the county do the curbs? I mean, we got ancient curbs on there with metal on there. It was down modern auto parts a couple of years ago. The guy parks them with the metal things, they're gonna cut his tire on them. Now, that's up to you. You forfeited state fund, you should have told the county, "You're gonna have to put curbs in there."
They did a portion of that.
No, they only did the handicap ramps on the corners.
That's not true, Mr. Mayor, but that's fine, that's your amendment.
Well, not only did I drive it, I walked it and looked at it. Many places you had no curbs at all. Some of them got broken, there's two inches and all that. And that's within your power. You could have stopped him, not given him permit to pave it until that was done. Or you negotiated and let the town do it. Because now you paved the road, and you got the missing, the dilapidated horrendous curbs. And it looks like hell, all right? Let's see, the other thing I want to thank, Mr. Iacono. I was in town hall, I picked up the newspaper, he left.
I'm sure he didn't want to miss your moment, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, 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 wait. I read that he cut down on the overtime by about 14, if I recall the figures, about $14,000. And I want to thank him for that. I also understand, Mr. Mayor, that you can bring in department heads to talk to them, ask them where they can save and where to spend it.
Me, I have not.
Huh?
Mr. Iacono. I have not, Tom.
Well, there's a lot of ways, and the other thing which I want to tell Mr. Iacono, I thank him for that, and then the other thing, what I think you should do, or didn't ask, employees should have to be made to fill out time sheets, especially DPW workers. Where they do it, I inform the time sheet, where, what property you're working on, what time you got there, what time you left, and the work performed up there. And believe it or not, one, because I read it, man, one time it was discovered that 158 man-hours were expended cutting the grass at the lower...
Mr. Compliment.
Mr. Iacono, he told me I picked up the papers this afternoon.
You did, I saw you.
Then went home, I read the article, I thanked you for cutting down the overtime.
You were... What it doesn't say too is that you're speaking of DPW logging in and stuff like that. Mr. Iacono is no longer even paying people that don't punch in or out. Their paychecks are being reduced, every single time that happens.
Yeah, well, I hope all, I'm waiting to do that. I hope all employees, not only DPW, are punching in and out.
Absolutely.
Including town hall.
Absolutely.
Just as you were walking in, I said, the other thing I suggested we do years ago, all employees, DPW, had to fill out time sheets. What they did, in other words, they chapped the time sheet. I give you a copy of one of them. You know, I arrived at town hall, 9:02, what I did, work performed, cut grass, left, and all that. And...
You're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. I do need you to wrap up, I'll do that.
I thought you were saying something else.
I know. It's coming, I'll sense it, it's coming.
In regards to the garbage contract, this, this hasn't, the old policy is you don't do it. There's a clause in all the garbage contract where you can find them. And Mr. Iacono said, "You gotta document it." I've been complaining at town meeting Japanese. They dump the garbage, they throw the pails, they're all over the street, all right? And I gave one example, my daughter with a six-month-old baby has to get out of her car in the middle of the street to move the garbage cans and get in the driveway. They should be given a letter, like Mr. Iacono. You gotta document it, all over. The previous council and four of them are sitting up there. I draw pictures of the street with all these garbage cans, they're all... They just went, dumped the garbage, and they flinked. So you've gotta give a letter to the garbage man. They've gotta put them back on the curb or the sidewalk.
They've been put on them, I do need you to wrap up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, you know what happens? You guys spoke for an hour and all that, and then we get time to address your comments, and then we make this five minutes, all right?
I do thank you for all the compliments, though, today. I think we agreed a lot today.
If you would control your speeches, we would have less to talk about.
True. Also, if I do a lot less, I guess that's the case.
That's the case.
Mr. Mario.
Mario, address on 5 Dell Street. I want to try and resolve this issue for once and all. On July 9th, we sent a memo to the council in regards that you can make all the appointments to the planning board under Chapter 19. Under Chapter 19, went away. Where on July 1st, 1990, commission former government ceased to exist and was replaced by the council manager, former government, approved by the optional legal charter law. Why don't we do this? You have an attorney there. If you're right, let him give it to us in writing. But you're wrong, Chapter 19 does not exist if you do not get those four appointments. So I'm asking the town attorney to give a legal opinion here. What's taking so long? Either you're right or I'm right.
As far as I'm concerned, I'm following our Belville administrative code, Chapter 19.
No, it ceased to exist. Chapter 19 is under a commission or... I know, let him talk, I'm not interrupting you, let me talk.
I'm trying to have a conversation with you about it.
All right, yeah, you go first.
Do we throw out every ordinance that was passed? Oh, just the ones disagreed with us?
It tells you in black, let's get a legal opinion and end it. We don't have to go back and forth anymore. Let's get a legal opinion. Is that that, I'm not done yet. Is that that difficult? I mean, the council has some say up there, I mean, you know, you gotta speak up too.
I tried.
And also, on the manager's report, which I brought up at the last meeting, I did ask if the manager does any hiring or give us a report that has any new hiring that's been done in the last month? And the manager didn't give us the report this time, and I asked for it last time. He said it was gonna do it this meeting, so I'm here.
I believe he said we're gonna do it, I believe you asked, but I believe...
I did ask.
Not exactly sure what you're asking for.
Have you hired any new employees since the last meeting?
Since the last meeting, though.
How many employees did you hire?
Since I met him, Mr.?
No, and that's what, since the last meeting.
I do need you to address the chair, if we have any questions, any answers.
He's looking directly at me, so I'm answering him correctly. But how many new employees have been hired since the last meeting?
Yes, I don't... I'm gonna guess, but in the first three months that I've been here, I would feel more comfortable confirming, but I think there was two.
Two. The first one was, you got hired on a Monday, and on a Friday you already hired somebody for the registrar's office? Or that was interesting, because I don't even know where that was posted, where you hired that person. It's things like, none of these jobs, the public isn't given an opportunity to even apply for these jobs. None of these jobs are posted. Everything is who knows who. I'll end it right there, you know it and I know it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Dan about?
Hi, Whitney Harris, Queen Street. Same old story. Things have changed a little bit. The police have been issuing tickets to people parking on the corners or whatever.
Did you see your ordinance on tonight, first meeting?
Yes, that's for my mother, thank you very much.
It's changed a little bit?
Yes, yes. But, well, this is more FYI. The street has always been tremendously known as, I guess I'll say, a lover's lane, so to speak. People going to the restaurant, and it's not, I don't think, anything where people... Well, I know, I haven't called, I can't speak for other neighbors. But Tuesday, it was an all-time low. I came home, it was about 2:30 in the afternoon, and as I'm parking, there was a car parked across from me. And it was a gentleman sitting in a car with his hands back behind his head. I didn't really pay any attention. And as I looked over again, then I saw another head, and it was a very lewd act being performed.
This is a family meeting, man.
Well, I tried to be as discreet, because I was pretty flustered. I mean, you know, I think I've seen a lot of this. I couldn't even find my phone to call the police, and I guess it was...
I was at work Tuesday.
I guess because I looked again, like after a couple minutes, then the guy went up and turned around. I couldn't even get the license plate, because like I said, I was so flustered as to see it. I mean, I've seen people kissing and...
Did you call the police first?
No, because he was drunk. I was like, I'm gonna call and say it was a...
I can always guarantee you, we can do anything about it right now, though.
Oh, but I could have gone to my phone, I would have took a picture or something, but I couldn't, like I... But just like I said, just things aren't really getting any better. I don't know how that would be.
I believe you said they are getting better, though, aren't you saying? No, it's only a little bit, only a little bit.
A little bit. As far as they're giving tickets to people parking on the corners or whatever, so now you can get out of the street, but parking is still a problem.
Please, we'll keep a front of you, I promise.
Continue that, we'll talk to you.
This is an FYI that, you know...
Thank you.
I mean, we do have children on the street, too, at 3:00, they...
I understand, I understand. Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael, Children, 47 Floyd Street. Firstly, I have found, in regard to Mr. Frenetoni's legitimate concern and complaint about trash cans being thrown all over the township, I found that there's a really simple, cost-effective way to solve that problem. At least for my home, every year I give our garbage guys a little Christmas gift. And without fail, every morning, every time we have a trash pickup, my garbage can is not only returned to my curbside, but it's actually put back in my yard. All right, so it doesn't cost that much. Garbage men, remember, you have very good memories, who's giving them little tips. So it's just my little advice to fix that problem. Little Street, westbound near the intersection of Beach Street. Mr. Iacono, if you're not already aware, the road is collapsing. Before Beach Street was fixed last year, the sewer on that corner, Beach Little, had to be replaced, I understand. But the road is starting to cave in, and it's almost hidden. You don't realize it until you're on top of it. And I've heard a number of cars already bottom out. It's collapsing steadily, day by day. I know Mr. Gilbert is aware of it, but it's the westbound side of Little Street by the intersection of Beach Street that has to be fixed quickly. That is a township emergency road, so it's even more pressing to fix that. Street sweeping. I want to complain about the frequency, or I should say the infrequency. We're lucky on Floyd Street, a street sweeper makes a visit once every three weeks. And I don't think we've had a street sweeper visit Floyd Street, at least now for the last three weeks, it may be a month. So I wish, you know, I don't know if you're having problems with the street sweepers again, but please, you know, send them our way, at least, you know, once every couple of weeks. In regard to Rutgers Street not being fully paved, as we had hoped from Mr. Bellon's comments a month or so ago. Correct me if I'm wrong, but Belville, the Belville Turnpike from the bridge all the way out to the Meadowlands and Washington Avenue, even though they're, they seem to be two separate streets, they're both the same state road. But that little jog of Rutgers Street, that's the town, that's, or that's the county? That's a county, all right? So there's, it's unfortunate, you've got that little discontinuity there that doesn't, that becomes the county's responsibility. Everything else is the state's, but that little segment belongs to the county. So I guess that's the issue, why they won't do anything with that intersection. It's just terrible that they have it so disjointed for that particular area. Before this meeting got underway tonight, I brought to Mr. Iacono's attention that this outlet back here, that I've been using for the last year plus to power my camera, the last two meetings has been without any electricity. Mr. Iacono theorized that perhaps when you had a leak here, this roof, the ceiling was repaired, that somehow this got disconnected. I'm going to take him for his word and assume that this is not some sort of petty effort to deprive me of electricity so I can't record the meetings.
You are aware we live-stream the meetings?
Yeah, well, your outlet works, but mine isn't...
But the meeting is live-streamed, so nobody's preventing the...
Yeah, but it's, as you know, I'm sure, as you know, with the famous Supreme Court case, Harris versus Pine Hill, every citizen in New Jersey has the right to videotape. So, you know, again, I'm asking, I pay taxes to, please, have this... If you need an extra dollar a month for electricity, I'm willing to contribute that. But please, have this outlet fixed before next month. I would like to go downstairs. Was told that the circuit breaker box is downstairs, just to see if the breaker was installed. But I mean, this is ridiculous, this should be operational.
Is this the first time you brought that concern up?
It wasn't working last month, I assumed it was...
Did you voice that concern last month?
Well, I waited to see if it was still inoperable now. Last month, I took that as an anomaly. Now it's, again, not working, so...
But if it's broke, it might not fix itself. If you had told us last month, it could have been fixed by today.
Well, when we were here last month, you had an open ceiling here. So I assumed that perhaps that was the explanation. Ceiling's fixed, nice job, by the way. I would like to see this outlet, once again, operational. I'm not asking how much.
Mr. Calm, sir, you've never done.
The last thing that I want to mention in regard to all of the furor about the water situation. I understand the comment you made at the last meeting, that Belville's water supply, while it comes from the aquatic watershed, which is owned by NORC, that the water is tapped off before it gets into NORC. And I said, I think you said on the record last month, it's not as though Belville's water is coming from inside of NORC. And you repeatedly said last month that Belville's water is clean, and you also mentioned that much at the beginning of tonight's meeting. But two weeks later, when you had some press, you gave a comment which really throws, sends out mixed signals. Your comment was, "Belville residents drink the same exact water as NORC." Now, everyone is panic-stricken about pervasive lead contamination in NORC. A headline, a quote like this, a headline like this connotes that Belville's water is contaminated as well. You should have chosen that...
NORC's water is not contaminated, and we do drink the same water.
Yeah, but you, in one breath, you're saying Belville's water is clear, is not contaminated. And then you give a statement like this, "Belville residents drink same exact water as NORC", which implies that there may be underlying health issues. I, I think you, you're a smart person, you're in a very important, responsible role, to give a, a statement like this really sends out the wrong signals. People read this, use some common sense, people read a statement like this, and automatically they assume that things, Bellville's water has a serious systemic problem. I ask, next time you give a quote like this, think a little bit more before you say something like this, because this panicked a lot of people, and it was, in my opinion, irresponsible for you to make a statement like this, you knew better.
But it's a total fact, we drink the same water as NORC, I don't understand.
I'm not disputing that, but this, what the statement you gave implies.
That we drink the same water as NORC.
Yeah, but, but in light of all of the press coverage, this, I think anyone asks, if they were, if they were given this statement, and said, what, what do you think this means? They're going to automatically conclude Bellville's water is, is contaminated, they know it's water in NORC.
But NORC's water is not contaminated, so why would they think that?
You're gonna get into cement, this, you know better, this, this statement says the wrong thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Fleishman?
Frank Fleishman, eight thirty-three Main Street. First of all, thank you for turning off the air conditioning, it's a little cold in here. The only's back here, like, buttoning themselves up, you know, it's a little cold. I wanted to, to say, Mr. Melham, yeah, Mr. Mayor, please continue to push the state about that ban of Rutgers Street being paved, that sort of thing. I don't have a lot of faith in the state, so.
We're close.
Okay, I mean, I don't have a lot of faith in the state, if they treat this the way they treat, you know, improving our budget, I don't have a lot of faith it's going to happen very quickly. But, that does need, that does need to be addressed. I remember back in February, I almost blew out a tire on my SUV because I hit, I don't even call it, I don't even call it a pile, it was like a sinkhole, almost. So, that really has to be fixed. Councilman Graziano, thank you very much for mentioning the fact that, you know, there's graffiti on Main Street, that sort of thing, because we're moving back and forth now, I've gotten very familiar with Main Street, and, yeah, there is, you know, it's, it's a little unkempt in some places, and you can see the graffiti from twenty-one in places like that, so I appreciate you saying that. Want to say something else? I don't know if this is something that the police department or the health department can deal with. I saw something on the internet, and not, not, not usually everything on the internet, but this, this kind of jumped out at me, an animal rights organization in the area had put up a GoFundMe page stating that a complex in Bellville, the management of a complex in Bellville was basically poisoning cat food to basically euthanize feral cats in the area. This is a TNR town, and I take animal, you know, humanity to animals very seriously. I hope that there's something that maybe the town can do about that.
They have, they've, that complaint has reached me, and we put our police department on it, our animal cruelty officers has investigated or still investigating.
Yes, and is, is following up.
Yeah, but the earliest claims were that it was not, it was not true.
Well, I'm glad we have an animal cruelty officer, I didn't know that.
We do, after they got rid of.
Maybe the municipality required to have one since they're.
They got rid of ASPC I R, yeah, we, we have one.
The Great Lawn, starting to become a little more unkempt again, I've been going back and forth down Franklin from, you know, from Drummond, that sort of thing, starting to overgrow again. I really wish you could speak to the property owner a little bit more about that, you know.
He was in the office, so we could go.
Ah, okay, all right. You know, maybe, maybe we do something sometime, you know, where, when the Boy Scouts go and clean the whole place up, we film it and send it to them and say, you know, we cleaned it up, now please keep it clean, you know, something like that. Finally, there was something else. I can't remember what the last thing was, so, I want to have, you know, a couple of compliments to yield tonight, so.
You can have your time for that.
Well, no, I can't, it's only five minutes.
There's a lot of compliments.
Oh, well, thank you for line evening.
Must be the water.
When you first, your first meeting, you said that with the public comment, it couldn't be a back and forth.
It really shouldn't be.
Okay, so if you can keep that across the board, that'd be great.
I do, I, I try, sometimes there's a new person here who we haven't seen before, we give them a little more lead weight.
Absolutely, okay.
Okay, thank you. Speaking, no lead weight. I just want to get this cleared up about what we talked, we talked about before, and you asked me to do it in public. Well, I said, you want to do it in public. Well, I want to get it cleared up, I want to get it cleared up, the health benefits have nothing at all to do with the pension system.
I agree.
The pension system got in trouble because when Governor Christie Whitman was the governor, she decided to eliminate all the surplus. And she did that to lower the state income tax and to lower the state sales tax. And she says, well, now pay as we go along, why should we have this surplus layer there? So technically, she stole the money. Now, what happened was, that was good to pay as you go along, and virtually all the municipalities, including this one, and all the counties, have been paying their fair share as they went along. The problem is, the state never paid their fair share, and every year, they never pay their fair share. They pay what they want to pay. And that's why the pension system is in trouble. The only connection between the pension system and the health benefits is that the pension board or pension system administers the state health benefits plan, period. That's it, and from what I understand, and I might be wrong, because I know it was talked about going into it, but I understand the municipal, of Bellville, has their own health benefits plan, they're not part of the state. So, the pension has nothing to do with any of this.
Okay, I agree with you.
One other question I wanted to ask you, because this came up. Who handles the animals now? You said the SPCA, we're not involved, I hope, with the SPCA, because I hate them. There is no more SPCA, and every police department has to have one officer that's, that's. But I mean, when they get an animal like that, where do they take the animal? That's a copy, that's different, that's a different issue. They come pick up a dead animal or. NORC? No, no, as far as cruelty goes, we have animal patrol officer looking. But I mean, they don't pick up any animals and send them to the NORC ASPCA. Associate, sorry, associate. Why, I don't think that, I thought they had that, that, that meeting one day, they were talking about a contract, and it was, it was never approved. I don't know. Because I wouldn't want to have anything to do with the NORC one, because that's like a concentration camp in World War II for animals. I'm sorry, I hate their guts. Anybody else? Motion up? Man, David, yeah, she only let us speak once, man, she's not been twice.
One oh six, Pan Avenue, Mary Lopez. I just wanted to say, from what Councilman Graziano was saying earlier, about the cars blocking the sidewalk on the driveways, it's really not so much about us who are able to walk around those cars, I've seen people in wheelchairs, kids in canes, and not even so much kids, because the kids can get around them, when people, I've seen people in wheelchairs having to come up to these cars and not be able to get around them, because their driveway is pretty steep, and it's pretty dangerous for them to get around these cars, so that's really something, one of my reasons why I believe that should really be enforced, these vehicles parking overnight, blocking the sidewalks, they should be waking up with a summons on their windshield.
The chief has already indicated, it's been more than duly documented tonight.
And the other thing was, on our last meeting, there was about, a conversation about Webex, I had asked to be informed about it, what's happening for whiteboards, if that's still going on, I'm still interested, I'd like to attend that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Motion to call the public.
Motion made second, call the public, third, call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Junelberg? Yes. Mayor Melham?
We have a motion to move, it's an agenda, we. I got one, eight, please. Our meeting is not over, you guys.
Which one you want? Number one, I can't wait to get out that question.
Still have the meeting here, please.
One and eight?
One and eight.
Eight. One and eight. We have a motion to move it, agenda.
Who's the second?
Motion made second, third, call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Rogal?
Yes.
Junelberg? Yes. Mayor Melham?
One, motion for one, do you have a question or a question?
Just, Anthony, just a question on some of the invoices, or the, yeah, invoices. Is there a way that we can check? Because I'm looking at them, and I'm seeing some numbers, the detail in them, who, what, where, and when? Like, when, when I have to order hardware and work, right? I have to set an RFP together, I get it approved, all, everything I have to do for that job is in there, I get approved, I do the job, it comes back, it's checked, it's signed off. Who, what, where, and when? Because I see, there's multiple, there's multiple line items, so, I'm going to approve it, I just want to see if we can go forward and dig a little bit more detail, because that's, I'm just seeing multiple line items, like I see.
The, the software that we use for all purchase orders is, is, it's called Evidens.
Okay.
I can get you an access code, so at your leisure, you can actually go on, and every purchase order has four approvals. It starts with the department head, then it goes over to certification of funds, then it goes over to actual Kavanaugh, and then the last person before it's issued is made. And you can follow along, and then you can click, you can click any invoice, and you'll actually see it.
I, I, because I just see, I just see a total number, and then I, I just in my head, I'm saying.
So, the, the Evidens system will give you the ability to look at detail?
Online, I'll do it online, I won't do it in, the report is pre-canned, as you know.
Yeah, and, and that's, you can, you can see what I'm saying, I mean, when you see, when you see line items, and I'm just gonna hypothetically say paper and toner, I mean, you have a hundred toners, but you got, hypothetical, right? You have a hundred toners, but you have twenty-five prints. That's just me being mayor, same thing with other things, like gas, right? A little bit, yes.
Yeah, so we should come up with a way so that the council can go on and take a look at.
Like a read-only, so a read-only access, so you can, so they can drill in, if you want to drill in, they can drill in.
And then, and that could create questions, that you could just go with it.
Okay, thank you.
Is that good there?
Yes.
We have to see how we can. We have a motion.
Second.
Are you second here?
No, I'm asking.
We have a motion made second for resolution number one, third, call roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Graziano?